Away.
Away, okay.
I should have, I should have known who you were talking about. Couldn't put that together.
Glad.
Oh, prayer tonight? Do you want to lead us in prayer?
Be glad to.
Yes, sir.
The door's ajar. Oh, that's probably my fault, I'm sorry. I was raising a barn.
Thank you, Madam President.
I'll now call to order this meeting of the City White House Council for today, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is six P M. Ms. Nichols, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Roncel Burns.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Lo.
Here.
Matt Lousery. Will you have a form?
Thank you. Will you please stand if you're able and join Council members in just a word of prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you yet again for another day of life. We thank you for our city. We thank you for all the staff and all the police, fire, and everybody that helps makes this city what it is. Guide, guard, and direct our lives the rest of the week and forgive us of our sins. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all. And the Texas flag. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. That sounded fantastic. Please be seated. All right, that takes us to item D, presentations. We have a presentation bulleted here, but the participants are not here. So, well, if there's no objection from council, I'll push this down towards the end. Maybe they'll show up and we can perk them in. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, so that takes us to item D two, introduction of a new building inspector, Justin Lewis. Ms. Hargis.
Good evening, everyone. And I hope that you will please join me in welcoming Justin Lewis, our new building inspector. Justin is an East Texas, East Texas native from Boulder and a father of four. Sorry, I can't talk tonight. He brings us over a decade of experience in the construction industry, including time as a project superintendent with Berry and Clay and T C M C, where he led major projects such as schools, churches, and police department. Most recently, he has served as the building official for the city of Athens. Justin's already been a great asset to the team, and we are well into our onboarding process, which is going quite smoothly. We're excited to have him onboard, and I hope that y'all will help in welcoming Justin. Do you all have any questions?
Oh, the customary three-minute speech. Do you have anything to say?
Come on, man, speech!
I just, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we always enjoy it when people from this area find a way to come back to this area, and especially when they work for the City of White House. So, we're really proud to have you. We got a lot of work for you to do. Welcome to White House.
Thank you.
All right, item D three, one of our favorite presentations. We have a presentation of a donation by Republic Services to the White House Police Department. Chief, or Mr. Keenan, Mr. Keenan's gonna come on up and tell us about it.
I'm so glad you put that trash in here. That's better than sticking under his table.
In Louisiana, we just spit it out.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman, Staff, and Chief Keenan Republic Services. I'm here, it's always my favorite time to go here and present this check for first responders. This year, it goes back and forth, police and fire. We believe that every, every community should have good first responders, and this is money to be spent, not on tires or transmissions, but good morale booster things like challenge coins, things that normally you couldn't get in the budget. So, it's my pleasure, on behalf of Republic Services, to offer to give you this check tonight for five hundred dollars. Wow!
Chief, broach, you did a big job!
We're changing up a little bit tonight. Okay. I want to express how much we, I appreciate you. We appreciate all that Republic Services does for us. And I'm looking back at Councilman Briscoe, because he's part of the team as well. Y'all are always giving back to the community.
Yes.
And we really appreciate that. You, you help us be able to do things, and one of the things that comes to mind is our National Night Out.
Yeah.
Every year, you have given, and you've helped provide food and drinks for our community during that event. And it's those are the great things that y'all do and help us. And we just want to express our appreciation for that. So, Mr. Keenan, Councilman Briscoe, I have two plats.
Wow! All right!
Keep the right names and right order here. So, thank you so much for both of your continued support and invitation to our community. We appreciate that, Mr. Keenan. Thank you very much.
Good deal.
All right, fantastic. That is the end of the presentations. That takes us to item E, community interest. There are some items here on the subject of community interest. Mrs. Black?
Mayor and Council, just a reminder that filing for a place on the general election ballot will open on July nineteenth and run through about the same time in August, so you'll be seeing more information about that as it gets a little bit closer. This is a picture of the welcome to White House sign in progress, so the developer is working on that, and we wanted to include that for you all. One oh nine East Main renovations continue. It looks today like they were putting in the large entryway door in glass, hopefully. A lot of things are happening on the inside of the building, I promise, but with us getting a little bit of rain each and every day makes it a little bit more difficult on the exterior finishes, so. But that progress is continuing. And then Sheehan Park Concept Planning intended to move that project forward. Mr. Martinez and I have both seen some preliminary concept renderings today that are really exciting, and we can't wait to share that with you all in an upcoming meeting.
Excellent. Are they going to be able to incorporate the sports court grant project that we received in those?
They are. You'll see it, you can see a piece of it in.
Oh, excellent. Good deal. It's all coming together.
Yes, sir.
Anything from council on the matter of community interests?
Yes.
What you got, Council?
I want to recognize the police, fire, streets, all the staff, guys, folks, we've had a lot of rain in the last month, the two months. And I witnessed the, when we had the monsoon about, what, two weeks ago, I just want to say thank you, that, you know, they, they have a job to do. But when they, you have something like that, they go the extra mile, and it was so appreciated to see our team out in amongst the people. I mean, it makes a big difference. I saw the fire department do a little rescue on three forty-six. Started to go out there with my bunker coat on, but I said I better not back in the day. But anyway, but just thank you for what you do, and you're going the extra mile over beyond the call of duty. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, anything else from council on the matter of community interest? Hearing none, we'll move down to item F, consent agenda. We have two items for your consideration on the consent agenda. Number one is discussion, consideration, and action on an amendment to an interlocal agreement with the city of Tyler for computer support services. And number two is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on May the twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-five. If there's no corrections or anything to be moved off of the consent agenda on the regular agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the consent agenda is approved. Down to item G, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is discussion, consideration, and action on resident concerns on one oh seven Dewes Drive and the entirety of Dewes Drive related to stormwater, wastewater, and streets. Mrs. Black?
Mayor and Council, I will, for the purposes of this discussion tonight, probably be focused more on stormwater and streets than wastewater. I think we've addressed the wastewater concerns as best we can at the last meeting, but as a repressor, we've heard some concerns from the resident at one oh seven Dewes Drive and the entirety of Dewes Drive about both stormwater and the, the condition of their street. After the last meeting, staff reached out to Half to begin, to have them prepare a scope of work to look at both the streets and stormwater in that neighborhood, and they have submitted that back to staff. What they're proposing is a not-to-exceed cost of sixty-three thousand five hundred, which would include conceptual plans and layouts for both street and stormwater, using two-foot contours for that street layout. I will say Half was great when they were out, I think, within two days of our last meeting to start taking a look at this area. And staff is recommending that we move forward with them on that scope of work. It was not included in your packet. I got it a little bit after we had put the packet together, so if you'd like to see that, we can certainly share that with you. And we do have some representatives from Half in the audience tonight if you have any specific questions. But the deliverables on that will include some conceptual site layouts and an opinion of probable construction costs for the possible solutions, which is the first step that we need before we can consider how we want to move forward with this project, whether we do, whether we include special assessments that are cost share with the residents along that roadway and those types of things. So, staff is happy to answer any questions that we have.
So, this will just take us into the design phase with Half, is that correct?
Correct. We can take that from existing stormwater funds.
Any questions from council?
One of the people, if they have an agreement with us, one if they don't pay, like, on the schedule, what, is there repercussions?
So, if you were to do a special assessment and they did not pay, you could ultimately put a lien on the property.
Okay.
I think we need to do something over there, so I'm all for it.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Staff's recommended motion would be that the council authorized staff to move forward with the scope of work of Half to look at stormwater and streets on Dewes Drive.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve staff to work with Half on the Dewes Drive stormwater project.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. Item G two, discussion, consideration, and action on the reported drainage issues along the twelve-hundred block of Hagan Road. Mrs. Black?
Mayor and Council, on the twelve-hundred block of Hagan Road, we've previously experienced erosion along the ditch line. Recently, the city approved and put in a project that included concrete sidewalls for the drainage area that backs up to these homes. And those homes would be on Segal, I believe.
Segal, it's one of the boroughs.
Yeah. One resident in the block continues to report concerns with erosion on the rear side of the concrete wall, so the concrete wall kind of stops along his fence line. He is having some settling or erosion right prior to that concrete brick wall, or that concrete head wall. City staff and our engineer, one of our engineering firms, have been out and looked at the property owner's concerns, and they are still reviewing options for possible solutions to this issue. But the homeowner has some additional concerns that wanted to make you all, he asked that we make you all aware of, and those include lot-to-lot drainage, underground spring is how he refers to it. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have any options at its disposal for correction of those two issues at this time. Any lot-to-lot drainage or naturally occurring groundwater would be the responsibility of the private property owner and the adjacent private property owners if they're causing lot-to-lot drainage that's impacting his, his property. Or if the developer failed to properly grade those lots, that would be between the private property owner and the developer to correct. So, staff is continuing to work on this. I don't have any action for you at this time. We're continuing to review it with these rains and looking for possible solutions for any erosion that may be occurring along the backside of that head wall in that residence property.
Of the three items, I feel like that's the one that we could address.
Yes.
Because it is eroding where, where that retention ditch concrete is kind of abutting against the solar to eventually get out. Every time it rains, I go out driving now. I go look over there, and I go look over there, see, see what the rain's doing. And I see a lot of water coming over that. It is, it is a problem, so it needs to be shored up, maybe beyond just packing, packing soil, because I think it will get eroded, so thanks for your continued efforts on that, city staff. Anything else to add from council on this item? All right, that takes us down to item number three, public hearing, discussion, consideration, and action on a rezoning request for two oh nine Old Tyler Road, tract thirty-two dot six, a two-point-nine-nine-two-zero plus minus acre of land in the M Seawell survey, A zero eight-five-eight, Smith County, Texas, from commercial high-density to residential medium-density. So, I will go ahead and close the regular council meeting at six fourteen and open us up to the public hearing. We are now in the public hearing. If anybody has anything to say on this agenda item, now is the time to take the stand. All right, you just say your name and address for the record, and let us know what you got to say.
Joshua and Paige Hawkins. We're at two oh nine Old Tyler Road.
Wow.
We just moved.
Yeah, let's try. So, we just bought the property. It is zoned commercial at the moment. It has caused some issues with financing, insurance, just based on how things are set up right now. Also, we're having trouble getting our utilities in the, in residential, in, in its commercial right now. So, we're just requesting that we can get that changed from commercial to residential medium for the fact that it busts up to our business through our parents' property who busts up to our business. So, we've got kind of a large area there, so we plan on being there for a while as the parents age out and the kids being able to go back and forth between the grandparents. This is going to be our long-term spot, but it will be nice to know that if our house was to be damaged through natural disaster-type scenario, that we could rebuild and continue on.
That property north of you guys, is that, is that your property as well? There's a plat, like a, if you look on the monitor over there, I think it'll show it. There's a little narrow plat above where it's circled in baby blue. Is that just two different plats, both under your name, or?
The white one?
No, the, so the.
The, the pink one is right above you guys, yeah, right there.
Oh.
Yeah, that is Larry Love.
Yeah, that one's beside us.
Okay, and that one's empty.
There's one acre separate, that's we don't know.
That's great. And maybe, well, it's not our property, so we can do anything about it, but we're actually living in, possibly trying to, somebody we know getting that, you know, here in the foreseeable future, also put a house there, which would be a family member or a friend, but for right now, we're just.
Right. Okay. Any questions from council? I mean, the house has been there for a little while. Do you all know when the house was built?
Ninety-five.
Good grief, they got lucky that nothing happened to that house, and they had to get a total ice on it or anything.
Actually, I had a tree fall in it.
Oh, my gosh.
But I don't believe it was fifty percent damage, but it was, yeah, they got close. They really did.
Yeah, I think at some point during the planning, like, the city planning for the City of White House, there was an intended use there to kind of bring that commercial space on around Old Tyler Road, where you turn off at one-ten, that's the pawn shop there, right? Is that what that is? And to maybe extend that around, but it's obviously been developed for residential medium in several areas, so this doesn't seem out of line to ask that the house that's been there for thirty years as, as a residence be treated like a residence.
Yeah, and there is a, so once you pass the pawn shop, there's two houses on the same side of the road and in our property, and I believe they're zoned medium.
They are. That little triangle that's there, they're, they're all medium. I think that shows the two that you pass.
Yep.
Yeah, it's residential medium basically being used as residential low is what's, what's being built on those.
We have a ton of traffic that goes through there, but.
We, we would have requested residential low, but from what I understand, the guidelines of being next to residential medium.
Yeah.
That was as low as we could go.
Yeah. All right, any questions from council?
None for me.
I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we are in a public hearing right now. I will, thank you, thank you for speaking. Anyone else to speak on this agenda item in the public hearing? All right. Going once, going twice. All right, the time is six nineteen. I'll close the public hearing. We are now into the regular council meeting. Any further discussion from council on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, motion that to approve the rezoning request from commercial high-intensity to residential medium-density for the property located at two oh nine Old Tyler Road to the city council for their consideration.
Second.
All right, I heard Councilman Briscoe first, for the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, you are rezoned. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, item G four is discussion, consideration, and action on Park Meadow Unit Three plat and construction plan. Ms. Hargis. She has to walk to the microphone now.
I can't even get out. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Canyon Lane Development is preparing to begin the next phase of Park Meadows, which marks the first phase within the subdivision's planned development zoning. They have to kind of combine two, and this is the first one, that's the actual planned development zoning. As a planned development, both the plat and construction plans are required to be reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. All comments on the plat and construction plans have been addressed following staff review, so at this time, staff does recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at its meeting on June seventeenth, and there were no concerns from that meeting, and their recommendation was for approval.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hargis.
I believe on the, on your packets, I believe I have it, where it's a recommendation to bring to council, it's, I don't really actually need to approve it, I just failed to get that changed.
Yeah.
If you, if, if it's your.
Right.
Desire to approve.
I read it was unanimously.
Yes.
Approved in planning and zoning.
Yes, it was, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hargis. And we actually have a developer here, Butch Hall is here to answer any questions that you might have.
No.
No, sorry?
That's not.
Oh, sorry.
I tried to buy it, though.
Well, it's almost done. Sorry about that. All right, if any, any further discussion from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve Park Meadows Unit Three plat and construction plans.
Second.
All right, so motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. All right, we're gonna jump up the agenda a little bit. We have a celebrity among us. I saw Miss Lily Adams. Sorry, Erin.
Sorry. Erin's so excited.
We're going back to item D, presentations. This is the Ruth Jackson Youth Individual Award recipient, Lily Adams and crew, please come on up. Yeah, Corey, if you think you're not being put on the spot here, think again.
I apologize for targeting this.
Oh, no problem. I have some comments to read, but if you have anything.
Do you have this, Ruthie Jackson?
Yes, ma'am, but if you have anything to say before that?
No, we're just very proud of Lily and very proud as well to be a part of her vision, and we hope that other students will pick it up and carry this on and extend Blackhawk Creek and wildlife education, so we couldn't be more proud.
Oh, excellent. So, we are blessed here in the City of White House to have some really engaged students, both through our Youth Community Council and through the various projects that take place throughout the city. On the subject of students making a valuable impact in our committee, or our community, this is Lily Adams. She was presented with the Ruthie Jackson Youth Individual Award. This award is recognized as the efforts and leadership of youth to beautify the community and create cleaner, greener campuses, parks, and neighborhoods. Our young volunteers play such an important role in the organization, and their efforts should not be overlooked. So, Ms. Adams was nominated by Keep White House Beautiful for her impact efforts in their community. Ms. Adams, a two thousand and twenty-three Ford Leadership Scholar, focused her efforts on the community service project dedicated to wildlife conservation at the Blackhawk Creek hike and bike trail and park. Her initiative aimed to create a sustainable balance between human use and wildlife preservation, which included building shelters for local wildlife, friggin' bats, I don't know if you've ever gone out there, but they, there's bats out there, designing a new park entrance and organizing a wildlife education day for local students. By securing over two thousand dollars in funding and collaborating with community groups, Lily successfully transformed Blackhawk Creek hike and bike trail into a more wildlife-friendly space. Her efforts reshaped the park's focus and inspired long-term habitat restoration plans, leaving a lasting impact on both the community and the park. Her project is evidence that youth can play and implement impactful efforts at the community level and beyond. Let's please give Ms. Lily Adams a warm, rounded applause. Can we join you down there, Ms. Adams? I'd love to have council down there with you for everything you've done for the city, and you brought the award with you, right?
Yes, sir.
Made it a blip appropriately? And I think so the, at the trail.
Okay, everybody ready?
Hold on. Oh, we're looking over there now.
Saying, "Hall can."
Saying, "Lily."
Good job. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Adams. Who's joining us?
Speech!
So, I know the, the entrance sign, that trailhead that's up there, that's gonna outlast all of us, that thing is pretty. Thank you so much. All right, try to follow that, Erin. Hang on a second, let me, let me announce you right away. All right, so the next item, item G five, is discussion, consideration, and action on the City of White House city center policy. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to present the proposed City of White House city center rental policy for your approval. This policy has been carefully developed to ensure efficient operation, fair access, and proper maintenance of our city center. I have three quick slides and a handful of highlights, that way we don't have to go through the whole thing, if that's okay. Starting with policy and overview, policy overview and accessibility, the city center will be a vital hub, offering versatile spaces for a wide range of events and gatherings. This policy outlines clear guidelines for its use, ensuring it serves both residents and visitors effectively. City center will have a banquet hall, training room, multiple conference rooms, and an innovative coworking space designed to accommodate various needs from large events to individual work. We've established distinct rental rates for residents, non-residents, White House businesses, and organizations promoting equitable access while generating revenue. To ensure responsible usage, renters for the banquet hall, training room, and executive conference room must be twenty-one or older, while the coworking space requires individuals to be eighteen or older. Provisions, however, are in place for minors with parental or teacher permission. Reservation and financial guidelines, key highlights are, we'll have an app that will help to make rentals and subscriptions easy to do online via computer, tablet, phone. Rentals must be finalized at least five business days in advance. We will have a clear cancellation policy allowing full refunds when received at least three days prior to the event, and renters are fully responsible for cleanup, proper disposal of trash, and returning the facility to its original condition. And in order to reflect increased demand of operational costs during holidays, rental rates will double on those and holiday weekends. And finally, operational and safety protocols, ensuring a safe and well-maintained environment is paramount, consistent with city policy, possession, and consumption of alcoholic beverages are prohibited. And with the consult of Chief Johnson, comprehensive fire safety guidelines are in place, prohibiting open flames, with minimal exceptions for food warming and birthday candles. Decoration policy, strict rules apply to decorations to prevent damage to the facility, including prohibitions on nailing, stapling, taping, gluing items to walls, and painting confetti and glitter. Certain event types may require additional liability insurance, renters are responsible for any damage. And we are planning for city center staff to be onsite to operate audiovisual systems, ensuring smooth presentations and events. In conclusion, this proposed policy aims to maximize the utility of our city center for the community while ensuring its long-term viability and protection. We believe it strikes a balanced approach to accessibility, revenue generation, and responsible usage. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. So there was a pretty comprehensive policy guide that was, that was attached as part of the agenda. Any questions or feedback from council on what was proposed?
Mayor, before you take questions, I just wanna say Erin and Morgan have done a phenomenal job drafting this policy. I, I can't tell you how many meetings we've had, and we would, the rest of us who aren't, weren't tasked with drafting this policy would, would throw things out and be like, well, what if this happens, or what if this comes out? And I, they have done a really great job of drafting this, pulling from some other sample organizations, and putting it together, and answering all of my million questions through this policy development, so I really appreciate their hard work on this.
Where were the rates taken from, or benchmarked from?
So we, um, we looked at, um, some, you know, the closest kind of coworking space available to get some coworking rates, we looked at, you know, a variety of other kind of rental spaces, and we looked at, you know, banquet and, um, conference room and training room rentals. Pricing was one of the hardest things to figure out, because we, especially with coworking, but there's no real models for cities to cities that, you know, offer that. And so, trying to figure out a balance between, you know, as a city providing a service, or as a city, you know, offering rental space, um, you know, for revenue generation, and trying to figure out where that balance is, is very, very difficult. So, um, you know, that is certainly one area that we would love the feedback from you guys, because you guys know this community way better than, you know, some of us do. And so, um, certainly if you have feedback in that area, happy to look at it and happy to make any sort of adjustments you guys might think that we need to make.
That was really, my, my only fe- feedback is that the difference between a citizen and a non-citizen rate is not very far apart, in my opinion. Uh, and I would like to see a little more separation. I don't really care what the balance is, but in terms of percentage, I would like to see it be of more benefit to residents and a little more separation for non-residents. That's just my opinion.
That's really great feedback.
And I think what y'all followed there is my recommendation, which is what the rec does, they offer a twenty-five percent discount to, to citizens. So, the, uh, yeah, I also, so as an overview, I was like, you know, we want the, the city center to be something that is, uh, revenue neutral, if not, you know, for profit, to make sure that it's not a burden to our, our taxpayers in that regard. Um, and that's a really hard number to hit. You know, you look at, you look at something that's a model like, like the team did, where you have a coworking space, and then you cut that fee in half to allow for their making a profit on it. But we're also gonna be in a building that's, that's paid for on the INS side, it's not gonna come out of maintenance and operations. So, I think there's a little bit of opportunity to move on the subscription, to maybe bring it down a little bit and still find a way to, to run, uh, kind of break even. But like Erin said, that's the hardest thing to try to forecast, because if you have a price point and you don't get a lot of attachment, because it's a high price point, you're not gonna hit it. And if you put the price point down low enough, then maybe you'll have people that will subscribe, kinda like how I do for the rec. I haven't gone there in four months, and I've never thought to cancel that, because the, the rate that's, that's charged for that is something around forty dollars a month, and for my whole family to have access for that membership at that price point is something that I, that I hang on to. So, finding that balance is gonna be, is gonna be the hard part. But the, the packages that I, that I did see, I'd like to see, uh, an individual membership. I think the way it's proposed is a, a flat membership that includes direct family. I think that's an opportunity to maybe explore the price points as to, as to provide that. And then my only other feedback, I think, was a minimum age requirement that maybe we can add to the policy. I don't know where that is, is that twelve, thirteen, uh, somebody there that's unaccompanied, but can still be trusted because their parents' credit card is unfilled, they do any damages, and we have a phone number to contact if there's any problems. I grew up in skating rinks, I don't, I don't know, they dumped us off there, and they knew our parents would be back to pick us up, so they could and it happened a couple times, they walked me out to the car, and so we got a problem with this one. So definitely wanted to be a space where the, uh, the kids can come up there and do their homework, and meet in church groups and, and study groups, and, and maybe work on their class projects together without messing up their parents' kitchen. Messing up our place too bad either, by the way. And then the, the packages, kind of exploring the options that come with the packages, to make sure that they incentivize the people to use the space, but maybe not. Uh, they maybe don't give too much reservation, so I think I saw in there, uh, a membership gets a three hours per month access to the event space. Um, maybe that's something that we offer on its own, and outside, outside of that package, and that justifies bringing the price down a little bit. And the same thing with the access to the executive conference space. If you're given three hours a month to, uh, reserve that, that's kind of a half-day that's taken away, it just leaves the other half, so that might be something that's consumed. Maybe I misread that, was that the, was that the executives?
No, that's right, you got it.
Okay, so there's also a conference room in the coworking space, which all of the members would have access and can reserve through the calendar on the, uh, on the app. But given everything that's in that document, I mean, that's not, that's not a whole lot of feedback, you guys did a, a great deal of work in coming together and getting input on that.
Well, I think the rates look, uh, very fair, and I think it's a good starting point, you know, because with the flexibility that, that Mary Wancy was talking about, you know, we can adjust as we go, you know, once we start seeing how many people are actually using it.
I think the, uh, security has been addressed, well, that was what I was concerned about. Ain't nobody love kids more than me. I don't want them roller skating, riding their bicycles inside it, blowing, you know, hitting walls and all this. So, that's been handled, and I think, like, uh, Councilman Brisco said, some of this will be tweaked as we learn and go along, ain't nothing perfect. But the other thing, so we could possibly break even on this facility, possibly?
I think in the future, I don't think we will year one, maybe not even years two or three, but I, I, we need to get a feel for how much it's gonna be used before we make any kind of
This could be really neat, I mean, it's go, boy, it's gonna be beautiful. A real sought-after type venue, you know. If I get married again, maybe I'll be there.
I certainly think the event space will be used
Yeah.
pretty frequently. Uh, but hard part is figuring out kind of coworking memberships and all that, but
Right.
Um, yeah, we did talk through individuals, and we talked through, like, student rates and all that stuff, so yeah, I really think it's still on the table, for sure.
Excellent. Anything else from council? Is there any action on this item? Are we approving the policy as presented?
That's up to y'all, Mayor and Council, you can either approve as is with the direction for us to go back and look at those rates, and we can bring it back to you for approval, or you can table it, and we can do a little bit more refinement on those things, and bring it back to you at the next meeting, which is what my recommendation would be based on your feedback tonight.
I'd say membership packages in general, just to make sure there's room in there to
Right.
move stuff around. I bet it winds up being, being an Excel spreadsheet of option one, option two, option, something like that.
Well done.
Yeah, excellent.
And dress it up with some, you know, vegetation, plants, flowers, and all of this, make it look good.
Oh, you know where you're gonna make it look beautiful. All right, so with that, it looks like, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve it with that, with that amendment, with those changes?
Uh, let's do a motion to table until you're
Motion to table, okay, even better, yeah. So
I'll make a motion to table the centers, the city center rental policy.
Second.
Until the next meeting.
Second, yes.
All right, we have a motion to table with a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion is tabled. All right. So now we're down to item G six, other action, I mean, uh, discussion and consideration, uh, recommendations for Home Rule Charter amendments from the Home Rule Charter Commission. And this one is going to Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, on September of twenty twenty-four, the council directed staff to secure, um, a locker to provide consulting services for the review of the Home Rule Charter, and that commission has been meeting since January of twenty twenty-five. And they have done a lot of work, I think the draft that was included in your packet was draft either number seven or eight, um, of their work. And so, they have had a lot of great discussion and a lot of back and forth about, um, recommendations to refer to you. As a reminder, the Home Rule Charter kind of serves as the city's founding and guiding document, and outlines, um, what the city can and cannot do as it relates to state law. Uh, and the commission has come back with kind of two separate sets of recommendations. First, the current Home Rule Charter allows that the city council can review and adopt non-substantive changes to the Home Rule Charter Commission. These things include reorganizing, the removal of duplication, removal of conflicts and references to state law, and, um, those types of changes. So, the commission is recommending that the council do that. And then secondly, the commission is also recommending the following substantive changes, which would need to be put before the voters of the City of White House before they could take effect. Uh, and it would be to designate the city secretary as an appointed staff position selected by the city council, currently that is done by the city manager. And this would provide a couple of avenues that I, I and the commission both feel would be important, as it allows for another employee of the city to report directly to the city council. The day-to-day management of that position could still be the responsibility of the city manager, but you need the opportunity, um, I think it's important to have at least one other staff member that is separate from the city manager's authority in some regards. Um, it would remove the age restriction for candidates seeking election to city council and mayor, and would instead defer to state law. And the attorney has recommended that we remove this, because of the conflict with state law, it could be challengeable in court to preclude those from the ages of eighteen to twenty-one from running for office. Eliminating the prohibition on former city employees for running for city council and mayor, eliminating the prohibition of, on former council mayors, council members and mayors from seeking employment with the city. Again, these two things are particularly subject to legal challenges. Um, allowing for, um, points in the city manager's contract to be determined through the contract negotiation process with the mayor and city council. This is another provision that we even saw, um, change under state law. And so, with charter reviews happening only every five or ten years, it's hard for these provisions to keep up with the changes in state law. So moving this to the negotiation process with your current, or your city manager that you're looking to hire would be, would allow the council to be more responsive to those changes in state law. And then just a change in the presentation of petitions. So currently, the charter states that ten percent of the registered voters must sign a petition, but there is no date given of when you take that count. So as you know, voter registration rolls change all the time, and so this would just provide a set date and time, at the time of the most recent, um, recent election date. And so, that number is always readily available and easy to come by. And again, this is, um, a recommendation from the commission that you put these items to the voters. It's not a recommendation that you either approve or deny these, it is a recommendation that you put them before the voters, and let the voters decide if they would like to see these changes. One item of note, the commission did not recommend any modifications to the existing term limits for the council and mayor. And we, uh, both the commission and staff feel strongly that with the amount of changes that have happened in state law, these recommendations really kind of clean up and make sure that we're in compliance with state law. And so, that's why those recommendations are coming forward. Staff is not asking the council to take any action on this item at tonight's meeting. At the July meeting, staff will present an ordinance for council consideration to make the non-substantive changes that we have discussed. And then discussion, consideration, and action on substantive changes in order the election will come at a future meeting as well. Staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So those six substantive changes are items that would appear on the ballot for voter consideration?
Yes, sir. If you chose to move them forward, the council is under no obligation to move those items forward from the recommendation of the commission. Staff would recommend that you do, the commission, as I said, has spent six months, uh, meeting and going over each of these things, and so staff recommendation is always gonna be that you follow what the commission is recommending to you, but you are under no obligation to do so.
Excellent. I know that was a lot of hard, tedious work. Councilwoman Burns was a part of that, so I've read every letter of our charter. Heard from her and heard from another citizen that's on, that was on that committee, that they loved it, and I was like, wow. We found the right people. They loved, uh, really diving deep, and there's no better way to learn in the city. I mean, when I got on council, it's, it's what you do, you go through and you read and understand the charter, because people are gonna ask you questions about it, it's a, it's a great exercise. So, just from the council, thank you to that, to that commission for getting together and, and getting that work done. I think we're supposed to do it every five years, right, every five years, so glad to get it done. Well before the timeline. Anything else from council on this item? All right. That takes us down to item G seven, discussion, consideration, and action on a quote from Thirty-One West Productions to produce a State of the City video, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, as you all know, over the last several years, city staff has been preparing an annual report that highlights all of the accomplishments and goals of the council and city staff for each fiscal year. And we present that annually at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet. One of the things that we have seen, of course, with the prevalence of digital media, moving away from print media, is a lot of cities are having State of the City videos produced. We feel like, um, it will get a lot more reach and a lot more impact from a State of the City video than we currently do from our printed annual report. We will still produce a printed annual report, um, but would like to also include an annual State of the City video. I did reach out to two different providers of this, and Thirty-One West was the cheaper quote of the two, and, and they are in the video production business. They are the same ones that, um, we have contracted with to do Expedition Texas, I believe is the name of it, and that we're still working on with them, and so staff is confident that they can produce a quality video. And already, they already have some ideas going on, some things that they would like to shoot. And then this would also include, um, any V-roll footage or any video clips would then become possession of the city that we could use for other things and other projects that we choose to do, so staff is recommending approval.
All right. Uh, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
With the advent of us as a city going more and more to economic development, I think this is a positive step forward. I mean, the more we can be professional, you know, to the public, the better. I think this is a great idea. You know, I'm all for video and signs, but I really believe this, I really believe this is a good step forward. And I say again, you could use it for other things, not just, you know.
Yeah, we'll have full ownership of the intellectual property that's generated by this production, so it'll be something we could chop up and use in other areas as well. All right, any, any other questions or comments? None, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor and Council, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to approve production of a State of the City video.
I'll second.
All right, we got a, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. All right, so item G nine is discussion, consideration, and action on moving city council meeting dates for August, November, and December of twenty twenty. I skipped eight, I'm sorry, ooh, discussion of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, we've been working diligently, I won't say that we've been lamenting over it, but we have, um, the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Um, and so, we are excited to be able to put that before you at a council workshop on Friday, July eighteenth. And then, a few other important items to note and dates going forward. So we started our mid-year budget review back in April with staff and department directors reviewing their current budgets and identifying any needed, um, adjustments for the upcoming fiscal year. We did receive preliminary tax rolls or tax information in late April. And this data does show that we will see a small increase in assessed valuations for the year, and so staff has been working with the appraisal district and some of our internal software products to, to best project that. But we will receive the final certified tax rolls around July twenty-fifth is when we'll receive those. And we will immediately begin calculating property tax rate. As you all know, once we receive the certified tax rolls on July twenty-fifth, the steps necessary to adopt and approve the city's budget and tax rate happen very quickly in a span of about two weeks. So, again, we will have a preliminary budget workshop on July eighteenth, understanding that we do not have the certified tax rolls from the county and have not yet begun calculating our property tax rate. and have not yet begun calculating our property tax rate. And once we receive that, we will immediately begin working with the county's tax office to get those tax rate calculations done and publish our required notices for the public hearings that are required. At that time, we anticipate that the council will hold council meetings on both August fifth and August nineteenth with the required public hearings to happen at those meetings. Staff is happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from council? August fifth and August nineteenth look clear for everyone? All right, one moment. So is there, okay, yes, we need a motion for approval of moving those, or is that just information?
We will move those at the, on the next item of year.
Excellent. All right. So moving on to item G nine, discussion, consideration and action on moving city council meeting dates for August, November and December of twenty twenty-five. Ms. Nichols?
So kind of leading off of what Ms. Black said, we have to change some of those dates for our August meeting dates. And we'll have one additional meeting, which will take place on August fifth. And that's where we'll introduce you guys the tax rate and the budget. And then the August nineteenth meeting date will be moved from its regular date to August nineteenth, which is one week prior. And while we're doing that, we decided that it'd be a good idea to just go ahead and move the November and December meeting dates while we're at it, since we can have those set and you guys can make plans for the holidays. So those will move up one week to November eighteenth for Thanksgiving and November sixteenth for Christmas.
Any comments from council? Any questions from? We're going to be late to a couple of education foundation meetings.
Not that one member matters unless we don't have quorum, but I may have international travel at that time. The August date.
Okay.
The November eighteenth was, was the one that we needed the quorum for, for canvassing the election, right? Yeah.
It's a smaller quorum than normally required for canvassing the election, so I think we'll be okay there. I'll need to look if anybody else is not able to make the August meetings. If you will let me know as soon as possible, sometimes requires a super majority of the council to get approval on some things. So we should be okay if just one member is absent, but if anyone else is going to be absent, we might need to look at some different dates.
It's tentative right now, so.
All right, any further discussion or questions? No, no, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to set the August city council meeting dates as August fifth and August nineteenth. Move the November city council meeting to November eighteenth and move the December city council meeting date to December sixteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries, date is set. All right, that takes us down to item G ten, the agenda item I usually skip. Consider future agenda items. So we will have, will the city center policy be on the next, it'll be on the next one? We tabled that one. Anything else to add?
We will have any follow-up from our budget workshop discussion potentially on the next agenda. We will have had the workshop prior to your next regular council meeting. And we will have some project information on some coil-run sewer line improvements that we are, would ask you to consider quarterly investment report, anything coming out of Planning and Zoning Commission. So we expect that they will have some, at least one recommendation for you that will be on your next agenda, possibly more. And we will have the twenty twenty-five bond issuance item on your agenda to finalize that. And then again, we will bring back the non-substantive changes for the charter. And then we will also be having an order of election for you probably on your August fifth meeting date.
Wow.
What about the updates with the city center? Do you have those?
Yes, that will be on there as well.
Well, it's not really room for anything else.
I'm sure we'll find something.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be more.
I had an idea the other day about an agenda item. And the idea was, and is to pick out fifteen to twenty White House high school seniors that's going to be a senior, you know, coming up. Let them do one month of community service. And, but the only thing that concerns me is that, being a child of the fifties myself, you have tort liability now and all kinds of lawsuits and, because, you know, I, I thought about they could dig out cupboards, you know, drainage ditches. They could put stop signs up with adult supervision. And then you get into a situation about who's going to be the adult supervision person, you know. But it would just be a neat deal. But I don't know if we could pull it off. I don't know, I know. With today's lawsuit mantra and all that, I don't know if we could or not, but it'd be neat. Pay a minimum wage.
What's, what's the agenda item?
Well, it's not much of a agenda item. I guess I'll redraw it, re, you know, but it's just an idea.
Anything else for future agenda? All right, that takes us down to item H, administrative reports. Number one is receive reports from staff. We have our May reports. Ooh.
I thought it was fast today.
It comes in spurts. Everybody's loading it up. Everybody in the audience is out there loading it up right now.
Is that what it is? I should start poll metrics on it.
Oh, do we have that? Oh, make that one of the charts.
Yeah.
All right.
And the good news is we've seen our sales tax kind of recover over the last couple of months.
Oh, nice.
I noticed it, yep.
We're still anticipating it'll be flat overall for the fiscal year, but that's a little bit better than what we were thinking early on in the fiscal year, so.
But you know, I looked at twenty twenty-five and I looked at twenty twenty-two. We've come a long way.
We have.
A long way, you know.
If it ever stops raining, maybe we'll have some water revenue.
I haven't watered my yard in a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Even the sewer fees are coming up.
Part of that, remember, we did do a small rate increase on the wastewater side last year. So not all of that is going to be an increase in use so much as it is probably based on the small fee increase just because they're all up. Now Development Services, Planning and Zoning have quite a few items on their agenda at their last meeting, eight or nine items, I believe. And so while the total permits number looks a little down and inspections may be looking a little down as to what we've seen in prior years, we certainly expect that to pick up and our growth remains strong. So we're just in that phase where it's a lot more development as a whole coming on as opposed to individual lots.
Response times are great?
You know, in May, they did a lot of work on their fire hydrant inspections and rehabs. They're all the city. Try to get it to it before it gets too hot. Our public works team, as you mentioned, Councilman Merle, has done a ton of response on stormwater both in May and June and have done a phenomenal job trying to respond to that. I anticipate we'll have a couple more stormwater projects coming before you in the near future, so.
Yeah, good. I just hope we have enough personnel.
We're lean but mighty.
I'm neither one of those. All right, well, we got it going on in May here. Little burglary, little salt. I, I mean, it looks like big numbers, but it goes from zero to forty-five on the graph.
Right.
Yeah. Top twenty-five safest cities.
We, we are so blessed in this town, I tell you, we really are.
Oh, Neighborhood Services, we have a new chart, don't we?
Yes.
And I love it, thank you.
Look at that.
It's not surprisingly, with all the rain, highways and grass was a problem in May.
Yeah.
And a reduction in the right-of-way little placard signs, I think I've noticed a reduction.
I hope you have.
I do. And it makes the city look so nice.
They have worked really hard on that in the past several weeks.
We got our library numbers.
Yes, sir.
As always, that summer reading program really takes off.
All right, any, any questions from council on the monthly KPIs here, May reports? We also had a financial statement in your packet. If there's any questions about that now at the time, the income statement. All right, so we'll move down to item I, executive session. We do have an executive session item today, so I'll read this. Pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene to executive session time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. City council make a convene to executive session to discuss any of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, possible purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, personnel matter pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, economic development negotiations pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven. There will be a meeting on the topic pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two. Council convene to executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, value of real property on or about Deuce Drive. The time is seven oh one, and the council will now convene to executive session. So we're going to head our way across the breezeway over there, and we will be back as soon as we're done with this.
Let's clear the room.
We're back. Sure wish we had some snacks.
Are we recording again? Excellent. My laptop is thinking about coming back. Do we have a printed agenda that I can reference? So the time is 7:35 PM and we will now reconvene into regular council session. Is there any action coming out of the executive session from council? Hearing none, that takes us to item K, adjourn. Or entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'll make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
There's most?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor adjournings say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed stay here. The time is 7:36 PM and we are adjourned.
I'm glad you don't hit it too loud.